Okay, we have a corner. It's six thirty. We'll call a planning board meeting to order. And who's up for first information?
Don Chaplin.
Mr. Chaplin.
I'm actually going to speak on Don's behalf. And I know we all three came in at the same time. But I'm Greg Brenner with WB Engineers and Consultants. We're supporting Don and his company EV Go with their national rollout of EV charging facilities across the country. And EV Go is one of the largest electric vehicle charging suppliers to support the federal, state, local governments as well as developers across the country. And we have a site in your jurisdiction that's located at Campus Plaza. And I think that there were some questions in regards to whether or not the project would need to go before the planning board. And I think DeeDee asked that we be here to speak to the specifics of the project so that the planning board had an understanding of the overall impact to the site. And I have some visuals that I'm prepared to share with you if you'd like me to go ahead and do that.
Okay, let me enable screen sharing for others.
Okay. So the proposed site is going to be at the Stop &amp; Shop on North Hampton Road. And most of these sites go in shopping centers. They look to place them where folks are going to spend, you know, thirty minutes to an hour getting their shopping done. And you can see in the parking lot, this is the existing parking lot. Again, Stop &amp; Shop Shopping Center is planned north. There's an area right down here that does not have a landscaped island like the adjacent. And that's where EV Go is looking to place their facilities. Now I'm going to share with you the site layout. So again, here are the two landscaped islands. This particular install is a modest two-charging facility installation. The plan of the install will not take away any existing parking spaces as we'll be using the free area here for the utilities, transformer, and then the distribution gear for the electric charging facilities which would sit in the center aisle. Again, this space would be the handicap facility. And then this would be a general parking space. And this would be for any type of electric vehicle to come in, park, charge their vehicle while they go and do their shopping. I'm going to share with you a sample rendering of another installation. Not this one because we have not rendered this one up, but to give you an understanding of the overall context. Again, this also is a two-space electric vehicle charging position. And you can see in the foreground, you have the two charging stations. And then in the background, the distribution gear, and behind that is the transformer. So there's no canopies, there's no planned additional site lighting. The facilities go right in on the asphalt. There of course will be concrete pads poured to accommodate the conduit that runs between the distribution gear and the charging stations. And of course, there will be bollards to protect the gear from vehicular traffic. The site yard, the equipment yard, we typically landscape so that it's hidden from view, but has access as required by the utility for their transformer and also to the distribution gear as required in need for servicing. That is really the bulk of the installation. And so the question was, aside from the applicable and necessary building permits, was there a planning board submission requirement or public hearing? I think DeeDee, you were wanting to confirm to enable us to facilitate our building permit process.
Is there any signage at the street advertising your charging stations?
No, no signage at the street. The public is made aware of the locations via EV Go's website. And so they have an EV Go app. And when they're around town, they can log on to their app and they can find the closest charging station.
So looks pretty benign. I mean, I don't see a big deal with it. Anybody else have comments?
It's going to, you know, it's certainly going to take up some of the parking facility. And we don't want to have them go through all the gymnastics of the how much parking are they taking up percentage, et cetera, et cetera. You're right, it is pretty benign.
Joe, actually, where we're putting it, you can see there's no landscaped area in this location. The parking spaces start back, one full space. So we're going to take this area, we're actually going to reduce the overall impervious area for that parking lot by adding these two landscape islands that will have the equipment. So while we'll be doing some restriping, the net delta on parking spaces, our goal is to make it zero.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought the landscaping up. This is a typical example of a sea of asphalt with no, no, there's very little greenery in this particular parking. I've seen people go forty-five degrees across that parking lot.
I wish you would landscape it and make it look decent.
Well, our job is to make the facility certainly look decent, hide the equipment when we can. But we want people to be able to find it as well.
Just curious, who pays for the electricity? How do you pay for it when you're charging your car?
Michael, that's a great question. And so they have memberships with EV Go, so they pay through EV Go. And they're billed via their account that they have with them.
What would be the closest one charging station to this one in Hampshire County? If any.
Don, do you have that information against?
Lexus, the Lexus one at the Pride Gas Station.
Pride Station has them.
Yes, they have.
Tesla, that's Tesla.
That's the Tesla one.
Yeah, that's a Tesla one.
Tesla has a couple at the Pride, but there's some generic ones at the Pride Station too.
Oh.
I think there's two or three generic ones.
What were you going to say, Don?
I was just saying that there's a lot of charging stations throughout Massachusetts in regards to high-powered ones. When I was with Electrify America, we installed one over in Chickapee, Mass. by the Home Depot.
So Joseph Grodnick drives his electric vehicle to the Amherst Williams game in Williamstown. Will he be able to charge his battery in Williamstown to come back after Amherst loop wins?
Well, the batteries nowadays can go up to three to four hundred miles, so.
Okay.
Unless it's further out, they should be perfectly fine. And it only take, with these charging stations that we're putting in here, gentlemen, are it take about fifteen to twenty minutes to charge a battery back up to eighty percent. So these are fast chargers. It gives the consumer the ability to plug in. The app will tell them when it's ready, they can go shopping, they can go get something to eat, and then come back and disconnect and be on their merry way.
So this has nothing to do with the zoning aspects. I'm just curious. I budget basically an hour for a grocery shopping trip. So I pull into one of these spaces. It takes you twenty minutes to charge me up, but I'm occupying it for an additional forty minutes. How does that work with your business plan?
Well, what we do is, we do have disclaimers that if you're there more than, you know, forty-five minutes to an hour, that there could be additional fees. But we know that people are going to shop. So we don't hit people with fees when, you know, it's been twenty, twenty-five minutes. We understand people go in the shop, they're going to peruse. We just give them an email notification, hey, your car's charged. It's ready whenever you're ready. And what will happen is we'll just continue just to send you a notification every ten, fifteen minutes from that point, just so that way you're aware of it. But we haven't had, we haven't had any issues with any complaints or people, you know, staying there longer than an hour. A lot of people that are looking for this is, you know, when they go in the shop, you're going to shop there for forty-five minutes to an hour. A lot of people don't go beyond that.
Any other comments, questions?
There's a lot of bollards. What do you, how do you envision those bollards? Are those, you know, like bright yellow or are those going to be?
No, they're actually, if Greg, if you could pull up the rendering.
I think there are.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're a blue, it's a blue sleeve, high-density blue sleeve with reflectors. So they just don't stick out. They, we try to blend them in, so it's just not an eyesore.
I want to take a motion.
I'll just make one comment. I did have a conversation with the building inspector this afternoon about this. And I had asked for, whoever your permitting coordinator was, I did ask for some sort of evidence of landlord approval. But I would also just mention to you, it's not a zoning issue, but the owner of this, of Campus Plaza has some outstanding unclosed issues with the building department that may affect your ability to get a permit.
Yeah, so thank you. DeeDee pointed that out to us this afternoon. And we've notified the folks on the EV Go side so we can try to determine what those things are and how we can help them resolve them so that they don't hold up our building permit. I appreciate that insight.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to waive further site plan approval.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Next up?
Next up was someone who seems to have come and gone. I wrote it down as Lob Sang, but they do not seem to be here anymore. The next one that came in was just a telephone number, last four digits, one-six-one-four.
Yes, my name is Tim Healy. I'm here to talk about the pet hotel.
The what?
The pet hotel.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. Which is, Jeff Squire from the Berkshire Design Group is here also to speak on their behalf.
Mr. Squire, I haven't seen you in a long time. How are you?
It's been a while. How are you? Good, good.
Remind me what the street address is.
That's a good question. It is one fifty-five Russell.
Okay.
And the gentleman, one-six-one-four, did he say his name was Ken Healy?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Who has the floor? Is that gentleman, Mr.?
Jeff does.
Yeah, I'm happy to sort of take you through the request. If I've got screen sharing abilities, I can.
Yes, it's set up.
Great. So we submitted some material to the board late last week. But this is in regards to the pet hotel at one fifty-five Russell Street. Location of the property is here. And what they are proposing to do is in the back of the building, where you see this concrete slab, they'd like to do an outdoor, fenced outdoor, you know, area for dogs to go out during the day. You know, just fresh air, there's nowhere else on site really to take them. So the plan is to enclose that portion of the slab in the back. There's some mechanical equipment on the east side in this location. But largely, the remainder of it would be fenced and maintained on that existing pad. It'd be a six-foot fence along the, you know, on the street line. They'd also like the fence along the building just to avoid, you know, damage to the building and pet scratching at the, or animals scratching at the wall. But so this would be fully enclosed. There's also, you know, proposed to put a roof structure on it as well, made of the same chain link fence, just to really avoid, you know, their primary concern is, is obviously, you know, animals escaping. So they want to ensure that they can do everything they can to prevent that from happening. But this area would be accessed via door that would be put in the exterior, the back elevation of the building, so it has access to, from the inside. And yeah, it's really fairly simple project. Couple of arborvitaries on this end. We recognize that noise attenuation is probably one of the primary concerns. And so one of the other things that we provided is just sort of a quick study and look at sort of the location of some of the residential properties adjacent to the existing facility. And accompanying it was a letter with a study that was done by a third party just talking about, you know, noise and impacts to residential properties adjacent to kennels was this particular study. And the, you know, the focus of the study said that, you know, the primary concern should be on those residents that are within four hundred feet of, you know, those locations. So in this case, it's really these couple of homes just to the west of the property. There are some homes across the street, across Russell Street. But one of the things to point out is that the, you know, the noise and traffic along Russell Street is actually at a higher noise level than, you know, than a barking dog would be. And these would be, you know, limited to daylight hours. So, you know, eight to five PM, I think, was what was being suggested. No more than six dogs at a time. They would be out there, you know, for temporary periods, just for, you know, again, fresh air and relief and be brought inside again. And so this is a really very minor site modification that doesn't have any other, any other impacts to lighting, impervious cover or any of the other, any of the other sort of site plan triggers. And so the request was for a waiver for site plan to see if we could move this forward.
Now, enclose it, do you mean with a fence or do you mean with walls?
It'd be enclosed with a chain link fence.
Okay.
Yes.
So really, there's not going to be any sound barriers? I mean.
No, no, I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a, yeah, a totally opaque fence.
What would the hours of operation of this outdoor pet run be?
So I believe eight to five was what was suggested by the owners, yeah. Yeah, we've got eight AM to five PM, limited to a maximum of six dogs at any one time.
Seems like the vulnerable spot would be the house that's like a hundred and thirty feet west.
Right.
Have, do we know if they are aware of this? And if we waive this, are we throwing them, throwing their voice under the bus?
That's, Mark, Mark brings up an excellent point, I think. For those of us who are on the board, they initially came in, there were a lot of concerns by neighbors about noise attenuation. And the engineer was brought in from, I think, Framingham that was specializing in noise abatement. And he gave a very, very impressive presentation. And they promised that the walls would be built uniquely to abate any particular noise that could be coming from the inside. So we probably should in some way notify the neighbors before we give approval. That's point one. And point number two is that a cement pad has to be connected to the sewer, question mark, question mark, because it's going to be washed up. Question number three, if we pour a cement foundation there, it looks like it's going to be within the rear yard setback.
I think they're going on top of an existing slab.
Right. Right.
Where's the existing slab? It looks like.
It's that white strip immediately behind the building.
Right.
Doesn't cement get very hot in the summertime?
No, I mean, if it's, if it's a light-colored concrete, it's far, far less hot than asphalt or a lot of other paving materials, certainly.
I'm, you know, I hear the argument that there's more decibels from the road. I mean, I can, I can imagine when some trucks gearing up out of the stoplight, you know, and, or some Harley goes by, that's a lot louder. But there's also the argument that those noises pass and a dog barking could be repetitive, although.
I agree.
I don't think you're leaving them out there unattended, so maybe that wouldn't be. But I'm just, I'm hesitant to not give the neighbors a voice in this.
So I will just point out that both of the neighboring parcels appear to be rentals.
Okay.
They are, and I will try to pull up information on where the tax bill gets sent.
Okay.
Didn't we have this issue with the facility put east of this a bit, on the other side of the street? They had a kennel, they're putting a kennel or grooming facility, and wasn't that Barry Roberts' property?
Yeah, but that one's set way back from the road. There's no, the nearest residence from that one over there is probably a thousand feet.
Okay. I wonder if, you know, I mean, I'm just, if a neighbor spoke up, if putting some kind of a solid panel wall at the west side would deflect noise more toward the east and the south. But I don't know. It's all hypothetical because they may not care. But there could be someone there who's sensitive to, well, that'd be a rough place to live if you're sensitive to noise, but.
Right.
Unfortunately, the way the system works, I am not getting, used to be able to get the assessor's card, which would have the address of the owner, the tax address of the owner. And I am not getting that anymore. Ah, there it is. So the property most adjacent, the property immediately to the west is owned by someone in Hadley, but it definitely an off-premises landlord. The parcel, the second parcel that is between the first parcel and the farm museum is billed to an address in Granby.
Again, fairly local.
Fairly local, but, you know, again, it's a property management company in Granby. And I haven't taken the time to, nor will I, to look up what MBL management, where that actually exists. So, yeah, I just point out, it's a fair question, but I did do point out that those are both, you know, a notice to the owner would not necessarily reach the occupant.
I would think the owner may still have comments, especially one of the, the Hadley owner may have comments concerned as it is, he is the local landlord. And we may not need to need a formal site plan approval, but at least we should, I'm kind of leaning towards, few of the members of the board saying we should at least give the abutters, abutting residences a chance to weigh in on this.
I agree.
How about the sewer hookup, Jim? Do we need a note from this?
It's already on sewer.
But it's going to, how much more are they going to put into it, et cetera, et cetera?
No, I don't think they're going to be putting anything more in because it will be existing tenants, existing customers.
Well, but they have to wash it down after the dogs do their exercise. It's not that critical.
I think it's probably, I mean, they already commented once that putting this, that amount of extra sewage or type of septic, type of septic into the system wasn't an issue.
And isn't this just giving the dogs a chance to do outside what they normally do inside?
Yeah, but it's just a matter of, the washing down, I think, might be all extra washing down.
So what is, what is the plan for that? Are you going to recapture waste and bring it back into the system? Or are you anticipating sheet flow?
Jeff?
I mean, I think any of the solid waste, I imagine, will be picked up and disposed of like they do, you know, in the rest of the facility. You know, any of the, any of the urine probably is just going to run off and, you know, join, join up with the rest of the stormwater system, which largely is sheet flowed to lawn area and, you know, grassed areas. You know, it wouldn't be any different than, you know, taking your dog out for a walk, really, and relieving himself on the lawn. But yeah, I mean, they'll, they'll manage all the waste, you know, the same way they do with the majority of it inside.
Well, I'm not sure running off into the existing groundwater is a great idea. I mean, it's one thing to have one or two dogs in your house doing their duty on your lawn as opposed to having six dogs at a time, multiple times during the day, doing their duty out there and going somewhere. So I guess we want to see an answer on what is the plan for the waste.
The Sackford District, Jim?
Was that?
Aquifer.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, is this near the Aquifer district?
The Callahan well.
We can find out. It is hard to tell. Let me see if I can bring up a layer on the town map. It appears to just miss the Aquifer.
Okay.
The Aquifer goes through the middle of the adjacent parcel where the climbing structure lives.
Okay.
But this is just, just west of the Aquifer line.
So sheet flow? Sheet flow wouldn't, would it let it rain in, go into the Aquifer?
No.
No, okay.
No, it's, this is a one, let me see how big this is. This is a one-point-three-acre parcel. And it's completely out of the Aquifer.
So what, what would we do, Mr. Dwyer? Would we make a motion to ask them to come back to our next meeting? And in the meantime, we reach out to that butter to the west?
Well, it'll take more than one meeting, Mark.
Okay.
Because Mr. Squire is going to have to get us a list of the abutters and we'll have to notify him. So probably, it wouldn't be more likely a month from now.
Oh, so a full-blown?
No, no, no.
Okay.
But by the time he gets the abutters, gets it to me, and we notify the people, we don't want to give the people two days' notice either.
Right.
So we'll continue the waiver discussion and tell people that we are going to be discussing a waiver. the waiver discussion and tell people that we are going to be discussing a waiver of site plan approval for this project at our, well, that would be our first meeting in July, probably.
I think it's seven, six.
That would be the sixth, yeah.
Yeah, and if Jeff, Jeff is the uh the politician slash engineer that we know he is, he would reach out to the neighbors and kind of give them a heads up and tell them what he's going to do. So they may not even appear if they're, if they're satisfied.
So I'll make a motion to continue this to July 6th for further discussion and notice to butters.
You have a motion? Clear a second?
A second.
Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Jeff, you could give me a list of the butters on uh one set of, one set of labels is all we'll need.
Okay, great.
Okay, and just bring it to my house or mail them to me, and I'll get the notice to send out.
Okay.
No filing fee or nothing like that. We'll just take care of it like that.
Okay, that's great.
Actually, tell you what, get me the list of the butters on envelopes with stamps, and that makes it easy for everybody.
Absolutely. Whatever makes it easiest.
Okay.
Great. Okay, thank you, everyone. Good to see you all.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks.
Next, Mr. Dwyer?
Uh, Dorji.
Hi.
Or however it is pronounced.
Yeah, that is exactly how you pronounce. Hi, everyone. So um, we have this location on 229 Russell Street. Used to be the little ice cream shop, used to be Hadley Scoops.
Yep.
Um, we have this, I wasn't aware of it. So I was going through the sign making process, and I was told that we need to get approved by the town. And then I've called Bill, and Bill has mentioned that I should be in this Zoom call to see, to kind of show everybody.
What was this about again?
Uh, it's for the signboard for 229 Russell Street. We're putting up a ice cream store there.
You say an ice cream store? This is a walk-in ice cream store?
Yeah, kind of walk in and you can just sit out. We're going to put out chairs there. Used to be existing Hadley Scoops, so every, inside everything was kind of done. So everything is in place, but we just have to kind of, you know, um, we're just ordering stuff to go inside, just, you know, refrigerating stuff and just have.
That's been an ice cream place for quite a while. I mean, hasn't it for 50 years, maybe?
Yeah, they've closed for, it's two, two, two years, I believe.
Just, just a little history, a good friend of mine in college, Steve Klugman, suggested to me, after we graduated, we take a year off and run an ice cream shop, and that was where we were supposed to be. I declined.
Yeah. And it also has the drive-through.
Oh, is this the one across from uh almost of the Hadley Medical Center?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's, it's next to Sam.
Okay, that, that little stadium, they were selling ice cream, they were selling coffee for a while.
It was Dusty Rose for a while, yeah.
That was the one Brendan Fiden started?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's got a walk-up counter on the north side and
Yeah.
I think it has a window on the south side, but that wasn't used for the last couple of years.
What, what is your sign is going to look, you want to reopen, you want to put signs up? What is the signs going to look like?
Um, I can share the screen and kind of show what it looks like.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's okay, yeah. Okay. Everyone can see this thing, what it will look like. I haven't made it yet, but it's going to be um seven by four.
Okay.
Yeah.
On, on each side, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, bubble tea, that'll be popular with the teenagers.
Hope so, yeah.
Will you also have a sign, a sign on the building?
Uh, so we have this one in the front. And the drive-through area would, will be, will have a menu, menu one, menu board.
Lighting internally, I mean, not internally lit?
No, not internally, just from outside.
Okay.
How, how big is approximately this sign looks like?
Uh, seven by four.
And the sign on the building similar to this one?
A little smaller.
She said there's a menu.
Building there isn't, but there, the outside, outside, the other side will have a menu board.
One sign in a building?
I think she's saying no signs, no sign on the building.
Yeah.
Oh, no sign on the building?
Yeah, no.
I thought she said a smaller sign on the building.
For, for the menu.
Menu board.
Oh, for the menu board? Oh, okay.
Just our logo and then just have the list of things that we sell there.
Okay, so this will be the only sign?
Yeah.
Are you going to cook any cooked food?
No, no cooking.
No hot dogs or anything?
No, maybe, maybe later on.
Bubble tea.
Yeah.
Bubble, I love bubble tea.
I hope you come down with.
I haven't had good bubble tea since I went to Taiwan years ago.
Oh. Yeah, I hope.
That was the first time I had it, and I've had it at other places, and it just couldn't compare. Okay, any other comments or discussion?
So it's a seven by four, so that's what, 28 feet, uh 28 square feet on each side?
Yes.
So that's good, right?
I'll make a motion to approve the sign.
And the lighting is from the ground? Is that what, it lights up?
Yes.
Do it, okay. I would second that motion.
Motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you, guys. Um, I just had a quick question. So we're, we're in the middle of making everything yet. So if we remove the on the little heaven, would that be any issue?
If we move what?
Word graphics.
Well, on the, the sign.
If she changes the graphics, right?
Yeah.
No, that's fine.
That's fine, okay. Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you so much. So much.
And this is not, this is not going to be a seasonal business. It's 12 months a year.
Um, yes.
Might have to have, might have to add coffee in the future.
Yeah, coffee, hot dogs. Yeah.
Ms. Dee Dee?
Yes.
Hi.
Hello.
Time for your questions now.
Oh, okay, so getting back to mattress firm. Um, they will be going in front of the ZBA. My understanding, what Linda Laduke is telling me is that um they're looking for the sign to be illuminated. I will need to find out from her if that is internally or not, uh but I wanted to make sure what, you know, is able to be, you know, go there. So it has to be lit, but it cannot be internally lit.
Cannot be internally illuminated. They want to go for internally illuminated, they need a zoning variance.
Okay.
Because their grandfathering has expired on that building. And they do not have a hardship. They can't show true hardship for getting an internally illuminated sign. So no set on that.
Okay, and I think that's why she was asking too, because she said the, what they were going for was just to get that sign. If there, she didn't find anything stating about the illumination going for a variance on it. So that's why she wanted to make clear what you guys have said in the past.
Well, they're, they're also limited on size, I mean, size and quantity. How many, how big is the sign that they would like?
That I'm not sure. Um, I don't have the paperwork with me, uh but uh Linda does, so I'm going to clarify all that with her to make sure that when they have that meeting, that they're clear on that.
It's 40 square feet for a, a tenant in a multi-tenant building. I think part of the confusion is when the fitness place went in, that's been broken up for, Manny's has been broken up for three units now. And there's a fitness, Orange, Orange Theory.
Yep.
And Orange Theory went to the ZBA and got permission to put up like four signs in X, and, and in excess of 40 square feet uh among all of them. Um, so I think there might have been a concern that Orange Theory had taken up all of the available signage for the entire building. I think that Mattress Firm is still entitled to it, its 40 square foot sign, just however many, uh but the ZBA did give Orange Theory sort of a free hand to put up signs all around the building, I think.
Yeah, I know, and I didn't realize it until I saw the plans again for when Mattress Firm was going in. My understanding and the majority of all of our understanding is only two uh businesses going in there. And there's actually a small, little retail spot there in the middle. How they're going to do that, I'm not sure, because right now there's no bathroom or any, there's only the front entrance is their way, their egress, so. So there, if they're going to put another retail store in there, they're going to have to have a sign for that too. So I'm not sure what the whole plan is, but. So now if it does get approved by ZBA, you want them to go back in front of you guys again.
That is correct.
Okay.
In terms of.
Bill, you want to give your legal interpretation speech, or should I give a whack at it? About the ZBA at granting the sign from a historical perspective?
So, you know, the um, hey, I'll let you take a, take a
Okay.
I'll let you take a stab at that.
Okay. In the past, uh, we had a sign by law. And uh, everybody said, well, the sign, Zare's sign was on top of the roof, and it was 10 times the size that it should be. Why can't we have one? Well, eventually you have to declare a hardship to go before the zoning board of appeals. But the zoning board of appeals at that time seemed to ignore the real legitimacy of our hardship. It doesn't mean financial, it doesn't mean because you have one before. And they kept granting, granting, granting of variances to sign. And finally, the planning board says, this is almost at about to a uh zoning change. So the planning board threatened to, the next time one came before the zoning board of appeals, to say that it is not a hardship, and this must stop. How am I doing so far, Bill?
Ah, you're fine.
Okay, so Dee Dee, if this continues, that they start granting signs above and beyond the uh, what's, was approved at the town meeting. And uh, I think there should be a time where the planning board kind of steps in and said, look, these are zoning changes, they're not any hardship.
Yeah, because Bill.
You could Mr. Dwyer, please correct me if I'm wrong. Just because the ZBA grants the variance for the signs, doesn't mean the planning board has to approve the sign.
That's correct. I think we, we have separate jurisdiction under site plan approval.
So if they come before us, the planning board can still say no to Mattress Firm. You can't do that. And I would be willing to bet we will.
Well, and, and Bill, that's just like, was it Applebee's that Tommy spoke to you about? Um, they were complaining because they wanted signs, why couldn't they have signs like Chili's and I, and stuff, but obviously Applebee's wasn't grandfathered in or so, was that the case?
Yes.
Correct. Um, I think they came in not, I'd have to dig up the, I can tell you when the signed bylaw was amended. What I can't tell you is when uh various things were uh uh, the sign bylaw was most recently amended in uh 2011, 2012. So uh you're depending on when something was built, uh, it might be affected, uh, there's a 2009, 2011, and 2012, and I forget which one was the big one. So some people might be grandfathered depending on when they got site plan approval. But they would have to uh stay within the limits of what they were granted at that time. So um, I know Chili's did come back to us a few years ago. I, I don't remember, it's a little bit of a blur. Uh, what they were asking for. They were doing a, a rebranding. It didn't, as I recall, we weren't too concerned about it at the time because it wasn't too much different than what was there.
The biggest, the last, the last zone change we made to the signs was to allow multiple signs on the building, provided they didn't exceed the 64 or 40 square feet threshold. The large change regarding um sign was in 2009, or even a little bit before that. Because Lisa Sanderson was on the board then, and she was kind of on that committee that looked at all these signs. We went back to the town sometime during that timeframe to try to propose a larger sign if the building was set back more than I want to say several hundred feet from the road. And the town overwhelmingly voted all that down. They did not want bigger signs. So they were loud and clear, no big signs and no internally illuminated signs.
I personally like the signs when they have the goose necks over them, and I, I think it makes it look very different. I like the look of it, but.
So we agree.
So Jim, if I understand, if someone comes here to the planning board and we limit their sign as we do, and then they go to, are they going to the ZBA just for that sign or for other things and then throwing the sign in? Or is it a combination of?
No.
Could be any of those. But typically, they don't go to the ZBA after we've given them a site, but they go to the ZBA first and then come to us. And like Mr. Dwyer has agreed to, we don't have to approve that sign. We are a different authority. And I'd be willing to bet if they come to us with a ZBA variance, I can think of at least several of us are going to say, no, we're not going to approve it.
In that sign, they want to put on the back of the building, correct? So it's looking, it's on South Maple?
I, I don't know. I'm not sure where, where they.
Yeah, I think that's what it is. But I know Orange Theory, I don't believe, has a sign in the back of the building. I think that's what their thing was, is to have it more noticeable. But I, I don't know if people are going to know that they're there.
They do not, they don't want a sign on Route 9?
Well, I believe they're losing their sign in the pylon because of the store that's taking over their spot
Right.
is getting that one. So I, I'm not sure what else. I mean, is there anything else that they can do?
No.
Yeah.
Because they, they volunteer, that was a question that was raised when they gave up that spot. Where's Mattress Firm going to put a sign? And they said they're not going to have one.
Yeah, because I think Athleta that took over their spot is uh putting their sign there on the pylon.
Okay.
So. All right, well, I will make uh ZBA aware of things, just so they, they know. Because unfortunately, it seems like they're just getting these things and um, you know, I think they need to kind of further research some of the stuff before they actually have some of the meetings, but I don't know. But I will let them know that then.
Well, let us know when the hearing is, and I will attend it via Zoom and make, make the planning board comments known.
Okay, yeah, and, and Mark will actually be there because Mark has, um, he's got a hearing that day too, so.
Although I guess that too.
I may not want to piss off the ZBA. I'll let you do that.
As, 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 because you're going up, you may want to more or less be silent, Mark, so that you don't make it look one, like you're trying to shoot yourself with a foot. Trying to shoot yourself with a foot or speaking up on two sides of the foot, if you would.
Right, right. I will, I will not wear my planning board hat that.
There you go. All right, well, thank you very much for that information.
Thank you, Dee Dee.
All right, we'll see you guys later.
Bye.
All right. All right, uh, let's see. We have.
So I'm gonna make a motion to reopen the special permit renewal of heirloom collection.
I'll second it.
Doesn't appear that we have a lot of. Audience.
This is just a typo correction.
Okay.
Did, did you second it, Jim?
Yes, I did. Mr. Dwyer will explain.
So, uh, this was our first renewal. And, um, we did it for a year, and then I got an email from the. Uh, Council Attorney Albano saying, uh, my client says it was supposed to be a two-year renewal, wasn't it? So I looked at the, uh. I looked at the bylaw, and indeed, it is a two-year renewal.
Right.
So, uh, we just have to, uh, that was, that was our mistake, because we had, uh, not done any of these before. And I'm trying to remember when that was, so I can. Do the same.
So the original permit is one year, and then they renew it for two years, and then it's in perpetuity?
Uh, there's a second two-year renewal.
Okay.
Two, 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 two-year renewals.
So after five years, it's in perpetuity?
Correct.
So let me just flip through. Like it should have been before that, so let me just check my agendas. Okay, that was May fourth. So the motion was to, uh. Okay, so, uh.
To reopen.
Okay, so we did, we should do a vote first on the motion to reopen.
We have a movement.
We're looking to reopen the hearing, any other discussion? All in favor reopening, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so that should have been two year. Only approved.
One year.
Yeah, our error. Okay, so now I'm going to make a motion. To find. That there have been no concerns raised. And to renew for two years, retroactive to February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one. That's the motion.
That's the motion. We have a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
That takes him to twenty twenty-three?
Yes. To, uh, February twenty-eight of twenty twenty-three. And the bylaw does say that the renewal season is January and February of, of each year, so. We would be looking for them to come back in probably January of twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Next item, um, we've got, at our next meeting, we have, uh. The adult bylaw, I mean adult bylaw, adult marijuana facility for Hadley, Hadleaf. I think that's how you're gonna say, Hadleaf.
At least, yeah.
Green something or other, and, uh. At that same meeting, we'll be adopting the regulations for the MS four. And I added the, uh. Payment in lieu regulation, I think everybody got a copy of that as well. That he asked, everybody got, have you seen the copy of all that stuff?
Yes.
Yes, I did get a copy of that.
Take a look at that payment in Louis, see if that's how we wanna word it. I'll just be, make sure we have it put together properly. And, uh, we can comment on that at the public hearing.
And let's see, we also have nominally. Who else do we have scheduled? Oh, they have the garage.
Right.
Is that continued?
It was continued to, uh.
Oh, and to the fifteenth, yeah, and Kevin, or, uh. I mean, here's a, even though Kevin's request expires on a twenty-second, we'll need to take it up on the fifteenth.
Six fifteen. It's like a busy night.
Well. It assumes that everybody is going to be ready to go.
Right.
Right, you and I sincerely doubt Kevin will be ready. I also sincerely doubt Hadley Garage will be ready.
They're waiting on the DOT, right?
Yeah, they're dealing with DOT. It appears you know, Mark, about dealing with the DOT.
Uh, from my prior life, not much at the state, since I, I'm just on campus, but yes, when I was in the private sector, we. I occasionally came up against Goliath.
Oh, um, what's his name, um, Randy texted me today. That, uh, Exotic Auto will have our, his pictures available at our next meeting.
That's the fifteen.
I do have one bill to make to pay. And that's the planning board stipend for the second pay period of this year, a total of five hundred and seventy-five dollars. I'll entertain a motion to pay the planning board.
I think you ought to make it clear that's not for each person.
That's the total.
I'll make a motion to pay, to endorse the payroll.
Yeah, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Sarzinski, and Mr. Zagradino get a whopping hundred dollars. Mr. Dwyer gets one twenty-five, and the chairman myself gets a whopping one fifty. So we are probably the least expensive board in the entire town of cycums.
Maybe the state.
I, uh. I've been, I, I was reduced in October to fifty percent hours at, uh, my primary employer. And so I have to submit to the unemployment that tries to make up part of my loss. And I, you know, any other income, and so I have to put down seven dollars and sixty-nine cents a week. From the town of Hadley, which is four hundred. Yeah, seven dollars and sixty-nine cents a week. I put that in the DUA every week.
What is that, like twenty cents an hour?
Okay, I made a motion to approve.
Second, second, motion a second, all in favor, aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Don't we have to recuse ourselves because we benefit from that one?
Yes.
That one, we all benefit in the same degree.
Yeah. I have nothing else. Anybody have anything?
Uh, no, I have nothing else either, uh.
Oh, yeah, we, we did get a request from, uh. The town administrator that she's applying for some kind of a grant. And she sent it to myself and Bill about certain things that the planning board. Um, or planning board zoning bylaws pertain to, there's a whole list of stuff. But Bill and I came up with, I think, five topics that, uh, are pertinent.
Is it fairly benign, or is it gonna be something like requesting?
No, this is, this is some kind of a grant for mass works.
If we put solar panels on the, uh, town common or something.
No, 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 I don't, I'm not sure what this is.
Not important.
No, we're gonna sheet flow urine across Joe's driveway.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I just sent everybody a copy of it, when it's got different things. Um, it's, it's a grant for mass works for, oh, reimbursement for water, Route nine water and sewer line. That's what that is.
That would be wise to serve our taxpayers.
So.
Yeah, it'd be great, great if we can get it, and it would be, uh. It'd be a good, uh. Strategic grant to make, because it will carry so much, um. Cover so much if it is done simultaneously.
Yeah.
You know, this isn't our purview, I don't think, I just got a letter from the Friends of, uh, Lake Warner. I haven't opened it yet, but probably requesting that I make a donation again. To try to prevent the inevitable, is that Lake Warner is filling up. And eventually, it. Nothing that they do piecemeal is gonna solve the problem, thing has to be dredged, so. Talking about grants, I, I remember, I don't know, was it twenty years ago or so, Puffers Pond was dredged, because it's a man-made. Water, water source, and I'm, I think they've gotta do something about Lake Warner, because these little piecemeal things getting out there. Doing this and doing that just isn't working, I know there's issues with, uh. Potential environmental problems or whatever, but that can be addressed, because in a hundred years, this thing is gonna, it's, it's not gonna be there.
Yeah, I mean, Lake Warner's never been a deep pond.
No.
There was only about two deep spots, one was behind the Jurski, and one was behind the old bridge, right off of Stock, or Knighty Road there.
And one, one is behind my fam- family's old property there, the channel, it was very deep. Because that's where the, that's where the river channel, the Mill River Channel went.
Okay.
You know, they're, they're, they're trying to prevent, stop the inevitable from happening, the lake is filling up, and. Something needs to be done besides these little piecemeal things. So that's just editorial, as Joe Zagradis would say, an editorial comment.
Okay. Anyways, anybody have anything else?
Can't think of anything at the moment.
Okie dokie. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is history, thank you, and thank you, John.